Do so and with a three-minute time limit accordingly. So if anyone's here for a public comment, step right up.
Hi, everybody. I'm Megan McLaughlin. I just have a few comments. I'm retiring and I wanted to have a chance to talk to you tonight. When I was hired here in 2006, I was really excited to be part of Emory. My colleagues Evan Pippin, Malcolm Watt, Audrey Miles, were amazing co-teachers. Smart, kind, funny. You could not ask for better partners. I remember telling my sister, superintendent in Delaware, about the school and the curriculum. Wow, she said. You have Turk Investigations for math, Lucy Culkins for writing. You have a literacy coach and a math coach? You have paid time for collaboration? You must have a really progressive school. We worked as a school to improve writing across the grades and across curriculum. We had thoughtful, well-planned professional development that I looked forward to. We had time in August to get to know each other and have a few laughs. This year, I'm one of many teachers voting with my feet. I'm leaving Emory to retire. I have a lot of good, positive things in my future. I have a lot of concerns for the students, for the parents, for the staff, and for the teachers. Here are a few points. No one asked me for an exit interview, so I'm trying to fill you in here. Teachers need a voice. They need to feel like it is safe to speak up when there is an issue and not receive retribution. When I had a challenging class last year with a high number of students with significant behavior challenges, this is the same class that is now the first-grade cohort, I asked for help. Ms. Lang worked with me to turn around the behaviors that were making the classroom unsafe and making it very challenging to teach. On the last day of school at 3:00 PM, this is Friday, the day when I was the only teacher, I believe, at the school except for Ms. Wren, I was called to a surprise meeting. What a surprise. What Dr. Rubio said broke my heart. He was present via phone. He asked if I would like to be one of the on-call substitutes for the 2016-2017 academic year. I've seen many examples of how his leadership seems to lack the ability to reflect upon what he's done, to stay in his lane as the superintendent and let the principal do her job. There is a surface politeness covering a man I've come to distrust, not responding to issues but instead attacking teachers. This is difficult for me to say, Dr. Rubio, but I'm trying to speak my truth. Communication can be improved on all levels.
Sorry, your three minutes is up.
Okay.
Could we ask that she be allowed to continue?
My name's Lauren LaPlante and I'd like to defer my three minutes to Ms. McLaughlin.
I just need one more minute. For the good of all the students, for everyone in the community, I believe that we need better systems, how the children move around the school safely. We need routines in place. We need better supervision of the children when they're at play. We need a few items of safety such as the planters, which I believe are a lawsuit waiting to happen, those planters right outside. I believe that the behavior issues that present themselves today are such, they're so challenging even to a veteran teacher such as I, that when I spoke to parents today that were my kindergarten students, they expressed to me that they were willing to stick it out for one more year, but if things didn't change, they were going to pull their children out of Emory because they were afraid for their safety in the classroom. Besides the point, they were afraid that their children were not getting anywhere near the education they expected because of the discipline issues. I believe the best days are ahead for Emory. I believe this community is amazing. I've never met a staff that is so resilient and works so well together in the face of adversity. And I believe that Emory deserves leadership that reflects the efforts of the teachers. Thank you very much.
All right, moving on to the next. I'm sorry. My name is Anthony Rogers. I've been a middle school teacher here for 11 years. I mentioned to the staff yesterday that I'd never thought I would leave here so early in my career. I took those three guiding principles that we had years ago to heart about ending classes and racist practices and creating a sense of family and using innovative practices in our classroom. And this is my family. My ask and plea to the board is make sure there's more horizontal and vertical communication and articulation in the district. We are administrative-heavy in this district with two schools. Angelique Comet and myself, we have 22 years of your institutional memory for your middle school. We're the dinosaurs of the middle school here. We were the instructional coaches of the middle school this past year. We both finished our administrative credentials, and yet there is someone else from the outside coming in with not as much experience as us to run our middle school. And so if, and this isn't personal to anyone, this is about business and this is about our students. And so if we're in a position to end these racist and sexist principles and classes principles, we need to do it now. I'm asking the board to please work as a united front. No matter what our differences are, let's come here and do the work for our students. That's what we do every day when we pound the pavement in the schools' teachers. But I'm actually, I'm leaving. And with myself, Ms. McLaughlin, Ms. Coombs, Ms. Brunick, and Ms. Comet, and even Ms. Lang, you have about 100 years of your service leaving your community. 100 years of service. And I don't care what you and who you bring in, that's not bringing in that same institutional memory of families. Our reputations of families, they precede us. Students want to come to us because we taught their families. I just think that's something to really think about. We really have to think about that. But again, we're administrative-heavy, and I always say with some of the new administrators coming in, they're not culturally sensitive. They come in with a hierarchical approach to life and treat everyone as if we're roaches and dogs. And that's not the way to treat anyone, even if you have a title, wherever you bought it from, even if you have that title. It's not acceptable. In addition to that, when I, I had to reapply for my position on Edjoin, had to submit my resume for the same position that I was teaching. So I really want to ask you all, please look at the practices of how teachers are moving around here, because if it isn't equal, then that's discriminatory. I had to reapply for my position for the, in the classroom that I was in. And that's not personal, that was personal to me. I'm not a person who's vindictive in that way. I kept moving, I kept pounding the pavement. But if we have other teachers that are moving in this district, please look at skin color, please look at gender, and please look at how people are being moved around in the school. Thank you.
Thank you.
Honorable Board members, Dr. Rubio, faculty members, and community.
Could you give us your name?
I'm just about to do that. My name is Marcelline Kraffchik. It's come to my attention that a few residents have blurred the line between the superintendent and Measure J Citizens Oversight Committee. The COC members were appointed out of 30 applicants in a procedure entirely independent of the superintendent's hiring or any other personnel matters. Nor is there any basis to challenge the COC on the independence that Measure J stresses. I was urged to serve by a council member who trusted my integrity. Though I am not trained in finance, the document includes regular audits by experts, and I am trained in asking questions. My pals Shirley, Anamoto, and I spent nearly the whole first year doing just that, and when she left, I continued. I'll share with you some of what I brought to the table. I've been appointed to serve on city council, city county, and state commissions. Alameda County Superintendent, Supervisors appointed me, I can't even read, English teacher, appointed me to their Alcoholism Advisory Board to chair its Criminal Justice Committee, composed of two judges and an OPD captain. Supervisors also appointed me to the Parks Commission. I was the first woman on Hayward's zoning board and their first woman planning commissioner. From '71 to '80, I served on the State Commission for Teacher Preparation and Licensing Advisory Panel Reading. I was Santa Clara University's first woman instructor. I've published four books, one with the University Press, and more than 20 pages, papers, and articles. One featured in the New York Times. And lectured at universities in Japan, China, and South Africa. When I moved to Emeryville in 1998, it became clear that my target dream would be music in the schools. And according to reports by the late finance whiz Joe France, I donated more than $130,000 to EUUSD programs. I purchased musical instruments, trips to the Oakland Symphony, and lessons from professional musicians in the symphony. One of my sweetest delights is to peruse letters from youngsters who had fulfilled the dream of playing an instrument and who grasped the values that drove their perfect teacher, Mr. Carraway.
Three minutes is up.
Somebody donate me a minute.
You're ceding three minutes, your minutes to her?
I just have a couple more sentences.
It's okay, go ahead.
You have another three minutes.
Yes, you have another three minutes.
Oh, good, thank you. Yeah, the perfect teacher, Mr. Carraway. Aside from Stanford studies on how early music learning improves brain functions, we prized the learning of collaboration, as in jazz, and go Warriors basketball. And what greater pride for a family than a child having mastered a skill? Finally, I see ECCL as a miracle. This tiny community with the dedication of city and school leaders overwhelmingly backed, this community overwhelmingly backed the idea. We dealt with many hurdles with a series of superintendents and workshops in implementing community input. That outreach was part of Measure J, along with the promise to voters of an independent oversight committee. I speak for myself, but with confidence in my service-minded colleagues, that we see ECCL as worthy of our support.
All right, thank you. Additional comment?
Good evening. My name is Leslie Thornley. I'm one of the teachers planning on returning in the fall, and I have some concerns and worries and feel like my esteemed colleagues that have been here for many years can address better than I. And it feels a little safer to have other people speak for me. So on behalf of that, I'd like to donate the rest of my time to Holly Coombs.
All right, thank you.
Hello, Board. I'm Holly Coombs, and I have been teaching at Anna Gates for 15 years, and I'm going next year to teach in San Francisco. Anyone who asks me, I say I'm going to teach to be closer to my house. I have two little kids. The commute is killing me. But people who push a little farther, they find out a little more about why I feel it's right for me to leave. So I'm here to just tell you why I, all the reasons why I'm leaving. So first of all, I came to work at Anna Gates because I really wanted to work with some colleagues, Gabrielle Thurmond and Anna Krida Allen. I really respected them and the equity work that we were doing here, and I felt like I was really part of something very special, very important. Our work with Basies and the connections that we were building through our retreats, and I felt like I was learning how to be a culturally relevant teacher, which is really important, being a white educator with mostly kids of color. It was really important for me to tackle my own racism, and this school district was teaching me how to do that. And I felt like we were really creating something here. My, what I've noticed over the last 15 years is that I feel like our best years were when we were K6 and Anna Krida was our principal, and we were really moving forward. And then there was a few things that happened here and there that didn't really feel like they were the best for the students. The middle school got put with K6, and there was no real middle school program, and then Anna Krida got moved, and Basies, we didn't really work with them. And it just gave me pause because I wasn't sure that that was best for the students, and it felt like interference, but it didn't really interrupt the core of this solid group of teachers. The last few years have been so difficult, however, that I feel like I must leave. I feel that it has become so difficult to be here and watch the institutional racism that I see around me, and that we're not really, really deeply doing the equity work that we need to be doing. It's sort of on the surface. There's a lot of dysfunctions at the school that I can't really go into here because this is a public sort of formal setting. I haven't actually met any board members except for Brenda. She's the only one who's come up and talked to me, but had any board member come up and talked to me?
You're out of time.
All right, thank you.
I would have been able to go into more detail. So it just, it matters to me about where I work. And I was willing to do this commute for 15 years because I felt like I was part of something really important, and I'm not sure that the work San Francisco is doing is, was as focused on equity. And so what I've been thinking about is that the implications of this is, the first is that I really feel that the town of Emeryville needs to recommit to public education, the people of Emeryville, and that the school board, I haven't worked with you, so I don't know your practices, and I know you're new, but in general, the school board needs to be culturally competent and really committed to the community. So in the past, the school board members, I had their numbers on my cellphone, they came, like Josh came and helped me set up my classroom. He brought me books. They all knew my kids. You know, it was very familiar. They either had children who went here, or they, they went here themselves, and they were just very much part of the community. So I just want the school board to, to be, to really reflect on their practices and notice if they're actually being culturally competent themselves. I really appreciated the board policy that I saw, but I was wondering, well, how would you do that? Like, how would the board and our current superintendent actually be the ones to help create like this equitable environment? I was thinking, maybe you needed like a how in that, in that plan. And I want the school board to know that you set the tone. And so if you need to, I'm hoping that you will create some kind of reflective practice on your own work, but also on how you hear from teachers, because this, this is really not the way you're going to find out what's going on with teachers. But it also needs to be fair. So some sort of fair process where you really know what's going on. And if anyone interferes with that or tells you you don't need to hear from teachers, that that person can tell you themselves, then that should be a red flag for you. And finally, I've seen a lot of superintendents at our district, and I feel like it's difficult to be a superintendent of this district. It's difficult. It's a small town, there's all these politics. Please, in the future, please look carefully for a superintendent who's an experienced educator and also has all of their cultural competency in place, either because they are a proud person of color, they grew up in the community, or they just know our kids. And it will just help resolve, it'll help prevent a lot of the pain that a lot of people have felt, particularly the people of color. I have not felt any pain, but the people of color that my colleagues have felt a lot. And also, there's just a lot of things I see all the time that I don't actually believe a deeply cultural competent person would allow or tolerate.
You're out of time.
Thank you.
Ceding another three minutes.
I'm done, thanks.
All right, thank you. Additional public comment?
Hi, good evening to the Emory Board. I'm Diane Lang. I've been the principal of Anna Gates K8 School for the past three years, and so some of the people you've been hearing from have been on my staff during that time. I'm really happy to say that today I closed out my final year here in Emeryville. I was on campus until our last student left home safely. It's been three years. I wanted to come before you to talk about leadership. And to lead means to go first. But leadership for me is also about putting my name and myself before the community, because when there's a challenge in the school building, it's me that they want to see, it's me who they hold accountable. And so it's important to me that I express to you the difficulty that it creates when I, as a leader, the face of the school, cannot with full confidence communicate things to community members, members of my staff, with the confidence that it will come to fruition without changes or without things being possibly even undermined. It makes it hard. It makes it difficult. So I want to be really upfront about that. As the principal who has been here for three years, we've done work, findings about what works and what does not, best practices, and ultimately what works best for our kids. It is unfortunate to ever have that work, those findings dismissed as opinions when my feet are on the ground every day here with the teachers, in classrooms, in the hallways, in the lunchroom, on the field. How could my findings just be an opinion? I wanted to make sure that everyone is aware of the challenges of selective accountability. And when we talk about equity, it needs to be more than just a buzzword, but it's a real set of practices that we put in place. And we are letting ourselves off the hook in terms of equity when we say things like, oh, I forgot to talk to you, the principal of the school, about this decision that's being made that's going to impact our students and that parents and community members are going to hold me accountable for. How could you forget to speak to me or to remember that I'm the principal of the school? How could anyone forget? And if it happens once, we all make mistakes. And if it happens twice, I've certainly made two mistakes, three mistakes, but if it happens on a regular basis, perhaps there's something else that's the issue in terms of remembering I'm the principal. And when things are good, I get the credit, and when things are not so good, I get the blame.
Your three minutes is up.
All right. Okay, go ahead, please.
We have a partnership with the city of Emeryville that has built this lovely facility here. I want to remind everyone the importance of mutual respect that considers the needs of students first, always. This facility is for our children, and our children need to be educated, and that's what we have been tasked with, providing them with an education. Recreation is optional. Their foundational skills of being lifelong learners and scholars is not optional, so I hope that everyone is fully aware and engaged in making sure that the partnership is truly a partnership that centers around the needs of students. I am not done leading schools. I will be leaving. This is my final year. I'm very excited that we've reached the last day of school. I will continue my work with a very similar community. This is the community I want to serve, but just looking for the opportunity to be remembered and respected as a black female principal who's been here every day doing the very best I could in spite of whatever the circumstances presented. So again, I just ask that equity be a real set of practices that lead our work, not just something that we write down or say, something we really live by and really do. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Yang. Additional public comment, please?
Good evening. My name is Kevin Boyd. I'm a, I used to be a colleague, well, these are my colleagues. I've been here in this district since '99. I've seen, I've seen a lot of superintendents come through here. I've seen a lot of principals. I've seen a lot of what was constructive for the school and also destructive, but I've also watched how many of these teachers, many of the faces that I see worked their asses off, you know, to make things happen for these kids that we dealt with. I was with the oldest old school, and the hats we had to wear were, you know, many. Ms. Tamarie, Ms. Collins were two women that I admire very highly as they worked with me. A lot of the people here know what I dealt with, the kids that I dealt with and how I dealt with, and was unorthodox. But I did get support, and I was always support from my friends and colleagues who worked here. What I see the lack of here and have is just that. There is no support. There's a, I mean, a serious lack of support for our teachers in their classrooms, for our kids, you know. And I'm, right now, I sub at the high school in the office because I refuse to go into a classroom where teachers just don't seem to have it all together. And I'm, and that's all over the place because so many of them are just being, you know, drowned by what's going on. Now with that, I just wanted to say, like I said, I've been through quite a few superintendents. I've never seen the lack of leadership as I've been seeing here right now, the lack of personal pride, because I could always go talk to the superintendent. I could go into their office at any time and speak to them. I just didn't see that. I didn't, I haven't seen that in a few years here, and it's, and it's very, you know, it's not cool. It's not cool at all. So I just wanted to say that because I'm here every once in a while, but I still see what I don't like seeing. We need to see more support for our, for our teachers, a lot more support for these students, and generally just, we got to get this, we got to get what we built here back on what it should be, back on track.
All right, thank you.
Good evening, Board, and superintendent, principal, and my fellow staff members and Ramadan Mubarak, this is a month of fasting for the Muslims. I'm a Muslim, and this is a month of peace. So not to minimize anything that was said, because I agree with everything that was said from our teachers and our staff members. The colors here are changing in this community from black, brown, yellow, to white, and that's not a good thing. Our children are watching us. They're looking at how we lead, not only them, but how we interact with each other. Children know things that we don't even realize that they know. They come and tell me, Ms. Wren, did you know that, you know, Ms. Lang is leaving, Mr. Rogers is leaving? You know, he's like a father to me. She's one of the best principals I've ever seen. We have parents crying to me in the hallway. Ms. Wren, are you kidding me? I'm having them leave my son, take my son out of the school, and the son is crying because he's leaving his friend. She said, but I'm so afraid of their, for their safety. Things are changing that is not cool, it's not okay, and we have to stand up. We have to be, we are resilient staff members, we are, and we're going to make lemonade out of the lemons. But we can't do it without you recognizing that we see you. We see that you are not being equitable with our staff, with our children, with our parents, and we don't like it, and we're going to stand up, we're going to fight, and we're going to protest in the ways that we know, and we're going to ask God to help us in this fight, and we know we're going to win. We know we're going to win because we're here to win because it's about the children. We're here for the children. We love these children as much hell as they put us through, and you know, I told them. And you know, I told one student, you know, this has been a difficulty. He said, "Ms. Ren, we've given you 50 gray hairs this year." I said, "I know. You're giving me about 1,000 gray hairs this year." I've used the dye more often than I normally do. You know, but to make things more serious. Our children are suffering. They're crying. Their father is leaving. Mr. Rogers is like their father. And that's not to say that he's not going to be a father where he's going. And I'm real proud that he's moving on to another place that's got, they got our gold. They're going to enjoy him. They're going to learn from him. They're going to respect him. They're going to do their community meetings. They're going to love themselves. They're going to stand up with pride. And they're going to love each other. They're going to acknowledge each other. They're going to be on the hot seat and let each other know, "We love you. And what I like about you is this." And I didn't realize that you were going to, you would come to me when I needed help. These are the values that he has given, not just one classroom, but many, most of the classroom. Am I right? We do community meetings. So it's just not about the teachers are leaving. It's about our children.
You're out of time.
Thank you.
Thank you. Further comment?
Good afternoon. Audrey Miles, TK teacher. It's been a very difficult two months. But we still continue on each and every day to give our kids the best that we can, that we can give every day. We walk in and we find ways to find joy in each other every morning. I don't, many of you don't know, my room is the coffee room, you know? And we find that opportunity to have that community together and hug each other and start our day off with a positive, when often there are no positives. When you don't feel loved, you don't feel supported. We find ways to find opportunities for our children. Today, we took 77 TK and kindergartens on a bus to San Jose to a farm. We provided a community meal buffet of everything that they would want to eat, hot dogs, everything. And we paid for it ourselves. We paid for it by fundraising. We paid for it by writing grants. Every family that was there, there's an extended relationship with each one of those parents in that I have taught their siblings, I have taught their aunts, their cousins, their uncles even. I've been here for 14 years and I've never felt sadder right now. Because I heard Mr. Rogers was leaving, it broke my heart. And then I was walking down the hall and Ms. Collins said, "Can I talk to you for a second?" And she came and she started talking to me and she told me she was leaving. And it broke my heart and I just stood in the hall and I just started crying. Because it's just painful that... And everybody always thinks Ms. Miles is the rock. You know, Ms. Miles got a marshmallow heart, okay? And I love each and every one of these people in here, from the high school up. And I saw my class graduate yesterday, the first class I taught here. Those were my kids in K-1. I have history here. I need to be respected. I need to have my voice heard. It's important. I, this is my community. Not only do I work here, I live here, and I vote here. So I want you to realize as you sit here on the board, many of your faces that I know, that's one of my students right there. She's graduating next year, okay? That I'm an important part of this community and I'm an important part of this school and my voice needs to be heard. And you need to respect me for the work that I do each and every day. And I respect you. And respect is a two-way street. You get what you give. So if that's what you want from us, if you want that hard work to continue, you need to give us the same amount of respect and listen and understand who we are and not just pass us over and say, "Well, maybe there's a new teacher who is better qualified", which is the things we hear sometimes, okay? So, hear our voice. That's all we're asking you to do is to hear our voice. And this right here is our future, okay? The same amount of effort that I give to my TK is this, this is my grandchild, okay? And she can do everything that I give my kids in the classroom and more. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Payne. Additional further comment?
Good evening, Board. My name's Joshua Simon. When I planned to come here, I didn't realize the depth of what's going on. But I really, my purpose in being here is, I actually came to thank the district. Because my daughter, Maya Simon, who went here for nine years and this is home. My other daughter, Sarah, is, you know, wants to find ways to give back and volunteer in science and math. And their lives have been shaped by this district in wonderful, wonderful ways. My daughter Maya is going to Emerson College next year where, thank you. But I'll tell you, I was just as excited at, as Maya's graduation as I was at Imani Rogers and other Emory alumni who I saw walking for graduation. And, you know, Maya wants to dedicate her work to working in theater, to try to use theater to address issues of race and class and to build the conversations we need to have the kind of society that doesn't have the systemic roadblocks and systemic problems. And so, we're, we as a district, for many years, I was very proud of that we hold high professional standards, that we address issues of racism and systemic roadblocks. And I'm getting stage fright and missing the third. But we put it on every, on every card, on our every agenda. And we, but most importantly, we work as a board in using those three guiding principles to make sure that, that all of us, not just the board, but the board, the administration, the teachers, we didn't always agree, Lord knows. And, but we, at the end of the day, we were all trying to figure out what's best for the kids and what's best to bring, to bring it together for the kids. And I, I don't really know all the details of what this is about, but I would just ask if there's ways that we can hear this and pull that together. I know the seat that you sit in is a difficult seat. I know that there's difficult decisions to make. But at the end of the day, we have to find ways to come together. I think with a new building, there's actually opportunities to set tables for conversation. And setting a table for truthful conversations, like what I hear happening tonight, but other conversations that can get into more depth is an important thing. I build buildings for a living.
You're out of time.
We did Swan's Market. Well, I guess that...
Alright, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Please continue.
So, I build buildings for a living. We did Swan's Market, Preservation Park, Asian Resource Center, the California Hotel. We build affordable housing community facilities. Every single building we build, there's things that, you know, didn't work out the way we thought it would. Needs change, needs adjustment. But we don't just use that to fix the problems. We use that to find ways to have the conversations that also build the relationships between our team, between our property management team, our development team, our services team, so that all of us are looking at how do we work together better for the benefit of our residents. And I think there's an opportunity to have the same sort of coming together. Also, as somebody who does this for a living, I wanted sort of irrespective of all of this, to come back and just give you a heads up that there's a one-year warranty on any building. And this summer is the absolute critical time to have these conversations because you can still bring the contractor back for free. And if there's improvements that the teachers and administration agree on. So as a COC member, I wanted to offer, if there's any of my experience or the experience of the other COC members, we have a lot of people in construction, if there's ways that we can help to set that table, if there's ways that we can be a resource. I love this district. You have all given so much to me and my family. I just have to thank you and say if there's anything I can do to give back, I still want to find ways that we can make sure the kids and their needs are first and go from there. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, my name's Leslie Epstein. I've been here 14 years. And I used to be so proud to work here, sorry. And I don't feel that way anymore. And seeing so many people leave, it makes me, I thought about it. And the only reason I stay is because I have the most amazing group of students and families. I stay with many of my students for years as a special ed teacher. And I always thought, particularly the years like when Simon's daughter was here, Maya, all those years, I thought, "When I have a kid, my son or my daughter is going to go to this school." And I can say now, I would never send my son here. And to me, that speaks volumes.
Thank you. Further comment? Alright, seeing none. We'll move on to the next item, which is...
Out of respect, could we allow the people that donated their time to go ahead and speak?
Yes, please. Whoever did donate time, whatever's remaining on there, plaudited.
If they want.
Yeah.
Thank you, Board. Thank you, esteemed colleagues. I appreciate your, your voice today and you've inspired me. I'm coming back in the fall. I have every intention of returning. And on my plate, I see a brand-new reading series. I see a brand-new math series I'm going to be piloting. I'm going to be working with a new colleague that I haven't worked with before. There's equity in PBIS, which I think I mentioned fourth, which should have been mentioned first. There's technology. I'm excited and thrilled to hear that students are going to be having computers in their classrooms. I'm going to need a lot of training to leverage and utilize that program well. I'm also going to be doing this without my family. I'm going to be forming new relationships and I hope time and space is given to do that. Because to do the work of equity requires a lot of trust. And it requires openness and it requires safety. And that work has to be hallmark if we're going to serve the needs of our children. I was watching a videotape that I put together for my class, you know, one of those slideshows for open house. And I was looking at it and feeling pretty good about it myself. And then all of a sudden, I paused and thought, "Wait, I need to really look at this through some of the work that I've done in this district." And I looked at my slideshow again. And I had far more children in that slideshow of light-colored skin than a dark-colored skinned. I figured that out myself. I was appalled. I'm feeling like it's really brave of me for it to even say that right here. But this is the work that needs to be done if teachers like me are going to help children of color. And this work needs to be continued and it needs to be at the forefront. And I need help with the introspection. I want the help with the introspection. Because I don't think I can serve these kids well if I don't have it. But again, what I need for that to happen is I need a lot of trust. I need to be in a place where I feel trust. And I'm going to need time to get to know my new colleagues and my new administrators and to do the work that, that we have to do. It has to be here. So, thank you for letting me speak.
Thank you. Any more comments?
I have one. Is that okay?
Sure.
I was going to say, I hope I don't get sanctioned. If so, draw up the paperwork. Okay, so, I'm sitting here and I'm a little bit sad to see that none of you guys are really taking notes. You're just listening. And this is what, it seems like we're always doing is listening. And I said before, it was time for action and time for change. And I don't mean in the demographics. So I see the student demographic changing. I see the school board demographic changing. And as long as I'm sitting here, it's not going to happen. And I'm not going anywhere. So, thank everyone for coming and speaking. A lot of things that we heard was not known to us. And I already said before that action speaks louder than words. And if we're going to be a school board that's just going to sit and listen, then it only takes one of us to step outside the box. And I'm going to be that one. So everything that everyone said, I did write down. And I do want you guys to know that I will pursue each and everything that you said. I don't know how many sanctions I might get for it, but there's plenty of ink, plenty of paper, so be it. But I do appreciate all the work that you guys have done. I did not realize that all the veterans or so many veterans were leaving. Okay, so you are the glue that has been holding our educational system together. Not to say no one else can come along and do it, but it's going to take a lot of time and our kids don't have a lot of time. Our students here to have the relationships with the teachers and the staff, they don't have time to build 10, 11-year relationships. Our kindergarten teachers, Ms. Ren, Ms. Miles, Leslie, both Lesleys, Kevin, Ms. Lang, thank you for all that you have done and all your sparks that you brought to the meetings and shared with us. Megan, I wish you well and thank you for all you've done. I love your music therapy and it has done the kids just. I've been in this district a long time and as well as being a parent, I have also been your colleague and I'm always be a family. So, we are here and one of our guiding principles was to create a sense of family. And it wasn't just for some of us, it was for all of us. Students, staff, school board members, superintendent, everyone that walks in this district, our community members. Marson Craft Chick, thank you for all you've done. You've been an amazing blessing to the students. You have, when we didn't have money for the kids to do things, you made sure it was done in the music world. And I just want to thank you and appreciate you and ask everyone to give her a round of applause. She never asks for anything in return. And year after year after year after year, she's always there for the students. And that is who we need to be there for. It is not about anybody's egos. It is not about who can be the boss of who or who can make the decisions. But we need to all support each other. And I'm very sad to hear a lot of things that I've heard tonight. And it really does break my heart. But it's time for change. And we need to stop listening and we need to start taking action.
Well said, Member Collins.
Thank you.
I took notes as well, but they don't look as good as yours.
Okay. I'm going to make copies.
Thank you.
Cruz has a few notes. Thank you, Cruz. And I see Dr. Rubio taking notes. And Dr. Rubio, I hope the words are being taken to heart. And I think it was very respectful that they did not say anyone's names and they did not say anything in general. But I think the words that got across is all about us being team players. And moving forward, I hope that, you know, you can
I agree.
be the leader of the team and play nice, sweet, kindly, professionally.
I was going to wait till my report. I just want to just quickly say thank you to everybody. We can only get better with input and feedback. I can only get better with input and feedback. I'm not perfect. I'm trying my best. I'm trying to keep the district up and running and I'll keep trying my best. So I appreciate your input tonight. Thank you.
Alright, item six. Moving on to that.